Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As you can see, I'm not Commissioner Bryant, but he is away today. I'm happy to report that his wife is doing well, and they have a new grandbaby, so they're celebrating him and welcoming him, visiting with him. So I will be chairing the meeting today. So at this time, we would like to have our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Redding will give us the invocation.
Please value this. Let us pause for a moment of reflection as we gather today in service of our community. May we be guided by wisdom, fairness, and respect for all. May our decisions reflect integrity, compassion, and may we always seek the common good above individual interests. May we remain mindful of those we serve and grateful for the opportunity to do so. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) America, into the world for more weeks of silence, motivation, ungod, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Do I read this? Do I read this? Do you want to talk to your gentleman? Just look at him. So at this time, we trust that you all have had an opportunity to look over our agenda, and I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
May the motion be adopted again.
Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Barrett and seconded by Commissioner Redding to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, let it be known by aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion pass. Okay. At this time, moving on to the conflict of interest statement in accordance with the Halifax County Board of Commissioners' Rules of Procedures in NCGS Section 153A-44. It is the duty of every member present to vote on all matters coming before the board unless there's a conflict of interest as determined by the board or by law. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the board today? If so, please identify the conflict, and the remaining board members will vote to consider the requested excuse.
No conflict.
No conflict.
And no conflict. Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on to our consent agenda. We all had an opportunity to look over that as well. Are there any questions about the items on the consent agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Commissioner Redding.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Silver. All those in favor for approval of our consent agenda, please let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion pass. Okay. Now, we're moving on to the special moment in our day, in our agenda. We would like to issue and recognize some of our county employees that have gone beyond the call of duty over this year and received special recognition at our conference that we attended a couple of weeks ago in Pitt County. So we are really proud of them, and we have a special guest here today that's going to help us with that process. So I will turn that over to Ms. Christina Wells.
I'm excited. Not often does she get called upon to introduce a legend, so here I am. I must say, you guys are no stranger to this gentleman that we have with us today. And I do say, gentlemen, I have known him for, oh, Lord, more than 25 years. More than 25 years, but I know him to be an excellent human being, a man of faith, a family man, a businessman, former retired law enforcement officer who served our state and county very well. I have seen him grow, change, and evolve into an excellent community leader who led North Pitt County, not only as a commissioner, but as their chairman.
Warren.
Did I say who won out there? Oh, gosh. Warren County. Didn't get me out of left. So he led them not only as the commissioner, but as their chair. And now, he has served us and just left us as the immediate past president of the North Carolina Association for County Commissioners. And I'm talking about no other than Tarr Davis. We're better known as T., and if I know him, his name is Sweet T. He's always sweet to me. And I've just named him President Emeritus because he served us well in that capacity. And I know that he has plans to serve us well in the future. So without further ado. Mr. T. Davis.
Christina, you are something of a great spirit, each and everyone this morning. It's truly an honor to be before you this morning. Christina, you always have a special place in my heart. Yeah, we've had a very distinctive friendship over the course of years, and I value it on each and every moment that I get to see you. So thank you so much. Madam Chair, good morning to you.
Good morning.
It's such a pleasure to be with you.
A pleasure to have you.
I must say, and to the audience, not even having my back to you, but must address the commissioners here. But in his absence, Chairman Bryant, that is also a very dear friend of mine in his absence. I really do appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this morning to honor some really, really great people. To the board of commissioners, thank you for having me this morning. I was thinking about it as I drove over here. You are a very distinctive group. I mean, we got, you know, business people, we got some educators, we got some attorneys for law enforcement. We got the whole arsenal here over here. And I feel good about Halifax County because, ladies and gentlemen, this is where I began my entire life in Halifax County. Of course, I'm residing in Warren County. However, Halifax is what I always call home. And to the administrative staff, Ms. Deaf, you know how I feel about you and your staff. Y'all are just totally awesome. I feel good about where Halifax is and where it is going because of you all's leadership. This morning, I was just thinking about what I was going to say in reference to this recognition. We, all the time...
I count myself as a recognition.
Okay. I might be doing all right, but I better be very careful with my words now. It's always listening. But I thought about it, you know, when it came to my presidency as the North Carolina Association County Commissioners' president there, and what would I want to have as my initiative? And it dated back to my beginnings of Halifax County. That's where everything was just birthed. And that is the public service aspect of things. We have people who are very much, not necessarily they walk in the shadows of things, but we see them every day. And they are heroes because we just think that things automatically happen, especially when it comes to public service. You know, many of in here today, they know exactly what I'm talking about. And we see these people, but we don't see them. And many of the past presidents had an initiative that they were more or less about programs, and those things are great. Don't get me wrong, those things are great. But who doesn't? You know, board of commissioners, each medium you come hearing, you're talking about programs, talking about building buildings. You do all those things, but somebody has to do the work. And yes, they get a salary, get a paycheck. But many of us do it because we love our community. We love our state, we love our country. We do it because we love what we are and how we feel about our neighbor. So that's where the birth of the Heroic Hands came. Of course, I served my community as a deputy sheriff back in the mid-'90s of the Sheriff's Frazier, then went on to being a highway patrolman and retired last year. And I know for a fact that as a young kid, all I wanted to be was a highway patrolman. I didn't know what the salary was or anything. I just wanted to do it because I love my community. And it's the same reasons why I ran for county commissioner. So this initiative was not about me. It was about the people. And I'm so honored to be with you all this morning. I'm going to get to the point. Because not only did you recognize the statewide association initiative, but you brought it home. And you invited me here today to make this presentation because you have some incredible, incredible people that are here that work of multiple ranks. They, each and every commissioner's meeting as you vote and you come to a conclusion over how you want to lead Halifax County into the future, you give them the guiding star and bright light of your leadership and the fortitude and the support of them to carry out those duties. So I say to each and everybody that is a public service or heroic hand that we cannot celebrate anybody foolishly, but we honor the ones this morning. Say we say thank you, and to ones that are not called by name, we also say thank you to you also. So is it formally to Chairman Richardson-Davis that we called up the Heroic Hands members? Is that correct? Well, Mr. Strickland, you and AI come on up here if you don't mind. So Mr. Strickland was definitely honored as a guest, first night celebration in Pitt County. And you all know Mr. Strickland, right? How about just getting around him? It gives me so much honor. They gave me a whole list of things that I don't know if you want me to read all this, but... There's nothing. But Mr. Strickland is amongst all of us, and he keeps Halifax County going. And I just read a free thing. They got Michael, you know, I'm saying Mr. Strickland, but y'all knew him as Mike also, is that correct? But Mike is always willing to help others. You never hear Mike say no, or he can't get it done. If you have an idea, Mike is always ready to consider the possibilities to see how the task can be accomplished within reasonable budget and timeframe. We have wondered if Michael stops at the end of his work week and thinks about the number of people in departments he has helped. And I guarantee you, that's more than a 40-hour work week. I promise you. If he's making a difference, it takes much more than that. So this morning, Mr. Strickland, I celebrate you, and I say it's truly an honor to call you a Heroic Hands member, and you will forever be honored and cherished here in Halifax County for all the work that you've done to make sure that Halifax grow and the community continues to thrive. continues to thrive. Thank you so much. Mrs. Strickland, also, do we have, while I'm giving this challenge coins and stuff like that, did we have something Frank said or not? Where I've done? Where I've done? I won't repeat, but my last point, and I get to the next segment, is that Mr. Strickland is in a published book and it's spread out all across North Carolina, and people all across the state, whoever gets that publication, read about Mr. Strickland and it's one of the wonderful things he's done here in Halifax. Thank you again, sir. Did I let him say something or?
He would like it.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to say I'm a small piece of puzzle, puzzle back and back, what I damn couldn't be able to do, so.
Madam Chair, if I were going to the next segment, is that okay? And that's our tax department. You know, that's the most fun department in the country. Yeah, 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 yeah. But I was looking over, just to give a little backdrop and get my bearings here. The Department of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and Civic Credit Manual, which is listed nomination each year annually with excellent innovation awards. These awards are recognized county programs that highlight innovative solution and achieving no cost in resource savings, which include services and operations across North Carolina. And I believe that Halifax County Tax Department was honored one of the 10 projects of 48 nominations to be recognized in this year's 2025 Excellent Award, Innovation Award winner. And if they will come on up, I believe while I was talking, the association, each year we give out these boards of departments and county officials that are not just administering the duties of their office, but they're thinking out ways and better ways in order to do business for the people. And that's what it's all about. I love, we'll be real quick, y'all got an inside unofficial motto, taxpayers serving taxpayers. I love that. I mean, I really love that. Grab the ball for this one. And I will let you all explain what you have done and the program that led to your nomination and your award, I think, for itself.
We appreciate you coming today to give us an opportunity to explain a little bit about what we've been doing in the tax department and really implement it further in the last year. I wish the rest of our staff were here today, but they are literally being public servants right now as Shane Statham assessing is helping with login customers and phone calls. And my staff in collections, today is the last day of the discount period, if you want 10% off the property taxes, today's the day. But we, again, are public servants, we take that very seriously. And as part of that, we put into place using Microsoft Teams more effectively in our office. We started out just trying to improve communication, but then we've expanded it much further into helping us track projects and keep on timelines. And as I say all the time, to close the gaps or the cracks where things can fall, because it is our job to serve our public and to make sure that we are using their tax dollars wisely and to make sure that we are serving them in a manner in which they deserve. So of all of our entire staff, I'd really like to offer a special thank you and honoring Kristen Coker. Kristen is our administrative officer. And when we came up with this vision of what to do with Microsoft Teams, Kristen took it as her, on her own, to learn everything she could about the program and to build it out in ways, many more ways than we ever imagined. So this really is a product of her hard work. And of course, the rest of our team accepting, doing their work in a little bit different manner and being open-minded about it. We do appreciate everyone's efforts.
We've got a question, you want to go behind that? Well, I would close with this, is that, you know, for one, Ken, you just went through reevaluation. When the tax department is being celebrated to make sure, I heard 10, then I heard two over here as far as today, because I do own a little property in Halifax County, I don't know, I'd continue investing it too, but I can't hear the team. I want to thank my team. In order for you to do what you do and ensure that, you know, people have the ability to recognize and protect their property is something that we always have to pay, pay tax, but to have an innovative way to make that much easier, that's something to be remembered. Go around the ball.
Get one more, but. All right, flip it around. There we go, all right. All right, that looks good. All right, one, two, three, and one, two, three.
Thank you all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes my duties this morning. And I just want to say, as I continue my role as the immediate past president for the association, I'm honored that there are several individuals like Commissioner Silver here. I'm appointing him to the Citizen Commission for the state. And there are some other roles that I'm looking for qualified people to take on the association board to be impactful about what we do here for our great state of North Carolina. It's such a pleasure to be with you this morning. Yes, I have my own commissioner meeting, so I'm a tip tip out of here. And, but thank you so much for the opportunity, commissioners.
And we thank you for coming. We thank you and we support you continuously, you know that, I hope. And safe travels.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we're moving to the time for public comment. And I've been told that we do not have, we don't have anyone to have signed for public comment, so we'll go on through the next item on our agenda. And that would be, I think, Mr. Chris Roundtree, Planning and Development Service Director, will be up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, we have some proposed amendments to our Halifax County flood damage prevention ordinance we're looking at having approved. The purpose of this ordinance is to, of course, promote health, safety, and welfare of the general public and help protect public and private losses due to flood conditions. From time to time, FEMA will do studies on certain creeks, bodies of water, including the river, streams within the county. And they will look at those studies and try to adjust maps if needed. I think the last time they did look at our county was in 2015. So it's been quite some time. That's why there's 56 panels that they have identified a study on. They revised maps for these and required us to make some changes to our ordinance in relation to this. As required by FEMA, whenever these changes to the flood panels within a community are made, jurisdictions have to update the maps as well as the ordinances that govern them. These proposed amendments to the ordinance with the updated panels, 56 panels, flood insurance rate maps, as well as the flood insurance study they prepared for the county, are required to be adopted by the jurisdiction to keep from being suspended from the national flood insurance program. These amendments attached in your ordinance, which are redlined, they will meet the requirements of FEMA. In your packet, you have a couple of maps. It's just an overview map of showing the panels. They looked at some of the creeks and streams within the county. And then also included a copy of our comprehensive development plan showing you all the areas of constraints, which we do have plenty of streams and creeks without saying a lot, but there are plenty. So this comes up from time to time and we have to adopt what they have presented to us. There were no significant changes to the panels that they did the study on, and we would ask for your consideration in adopting this.
So at this time, what you actually need to be asked to do is conduct a legislative hearing on the proposed ordinance amendments. So I think if someone, you would ask for a motion to go into a hearing, if there's anyone in the public who wants to comment on the proposed changes, I'll add just to clarify that the only sections of the flood damage prevention ordinance that are being amended are sections 34.3, 34.31, 34.58, 34.81, and 34.82. Those are the ones that are redlined in the entire ordinance to set up, we redlined those to so you could see where they were and what they were. But it would be time for the legislative hearing at this point.
Okay, it's been motion by Commissioner Redding and second by Commissioner Silver to open the floor for a public hearing on the legislative hearing and proposed amendments to chapter 34 flood damage prevention ordinance. Can I, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. At this time, if you have, if there's any public comment, please come forward at this time. I'm sorry, there's a statement I have to read. Public hearings are held for the purpose of receiving comment from the public regarding a specific subject. Those persons desire to speak will give their name, their physical address, their phone number, and the name of the organization they are speaking for, if applicable. We request that each speaker limit their comments solely to the issue at hand and not direct comments towards specific individuals. In the interest of time, please do not repeat facts or issues covered by previous speakers. If you wish to comment, you should express your opinion on the subject matter and give the board an understanding of whether you favor or oppose the issue being discussed. The Board of Commissioners values and appreciate the opportunity to listen to the citizens of Halifax County and respectfully request that the above guidelines be followed. So at this time, the floor is open.
See another one came forward to make the motion to close the public hearing?
Okay, thank you, heard the motion.
I second it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Barrett made that motion and seconded by Commissioner Silver. So if all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passed. Okay. Next item, we're moving right along after that. We have.
Can I ask, just a last question. So we, we have to, is the old man be changed?
No, it's coming up on your agenda.
We'll address it later.
We always have a break in between and we do the action on the public hearing in a few minutes.
All right, any other questions? Okay, all right. We'll have Deanna Hart Gardner, our DSS Deputy Director, to please come forward. We're seeking approval of a home and community care block grant.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm Deanna Hart Gardner from Halifax County Department of Social Services. I'm presenting the 2025-2026 Halifax County HCCBG block grant funding plan and grant agreement. You have supporting documentation that we sent you. The Halifax County Council Home Agent received notice to use the prior year funding allocation in the amount of $654,675,000. The HCCBG Advisory Committee met and agreed to fund five of the current providers with the services as noted on the block grant county funding plan. A 10% match is required by all providers. Halifax County DSS requires 10% match is $47,353 in in-kind costs and $11,722 in cash for a total of $59,075. The funds for the block grant funding plan are contingent upon the balancing of the state budget. Once the block grant funding plan and grant agreement is in place, any changes will be made known to the Board of Commissioners through the County Manager's weekly update. You have attachments in your Civic Plus platform, which includes the Upper Coastal Plain Funding Plan. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve the HCCBG county funding plan and grant agreement for fiscal year 2025-2026, budget the amount to be received, and authorize the Chairman, County Manager, County Attorney, and Finance Director to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions that you all have, Ms. Gardner? Okay, we need a motion for approval of the home and community care block grant and plan. Is there a motion?
So move.
A motion has been made and by Commissioner Silver, they're second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wells. All those in favor of the approval of the HCCBG county funding plan and grant agreement, please let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gardner. If there's anything else that we can do as the Board of Commissioners, please let us know to help you in your efforts. Thank you. All right. Now, at this time on our agenda, we have the action on the public hearing. Do we have, do we invite you back up?
There is an ordinance prepared for you, in front of you for adoption. If you do so choose, it would include the approval of the amendments as well as accepting of the panels they stuck in the study provided.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
We are going to add any single-family property that will be affected by this ordinance?
There was nothing significant that they, the map set on the table for 90-day appeal, and there were no appeals. So I think it was mainly agricultural land, from what I saw.
Yeah, as far as the FEMA goes, I know that's outside of our realm, but if we're changing the ordinance, it's going to affect somebody, I would like to make sure we notify them if there's any changes, but there's nothing else.
Commissioner Wells, did you have a question?
I just got, just to make sure clear, Commissioner Barrett said there are no homes in this area that's affected by the changes?
Not to my knowledge. This is all FEMA's process. The maps have been out there for a long time and no one appealed it.
As I looked at them, it's kind of hard, some of that farm land to tell.
Yeah, it does. There's a lot of creeks that really feed into Fishing Creek and, you know, your swamps as well. Got a lot of development constraints.
Yeah, thank you.
If there are no other questions, I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance regarding the proposal tax amendments.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Silver. And second by Commissioner Redding. All those in favor, let me know by the word aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Give me a little, I'm trying to. Okay, so next on our agenda items, we have the Community Grants Program Funding and Recommendations. So Deputy County Manager Christina Webb. Well, I'm sorry.
Well, I got county wrong this morning. Sometimes your brain just locks in on it, even if you know it. Good morning again.
Good morning.
I'm excited to come to you today with the results of our 2025-2026 Community Grants Program process. And I want to thank Vice Chair, serving as Chair today, Davis, and Commissioner Barrett for serving on that committee as representation from this board, as well as County Manager Denton, Thomas Everett, Assistant County Manager, Mary Duncan, Finance Director, myself, and Glenn Rollins, although he was on vacation. He gave us his input prior to leaving, so we appreciate that. Just to hit some of the highlights, and you have background information, but as you know, you appropriated $50,000 again this year for our second year of community grants funding. And this funding is to be used for public purposes that the county has the authority to do. But through this program, we contract with nonprofit organizations or faith-based organizations to do this work. So those public purposes, just to again hit the highlights, are support of museums and the arts, certain housing programs, public recreation facilities, social welfare programs, and programs for seniors. As you know, we also have our Recreation Partners Program grants. That set of grants is for recreation programming. This is for recreation facilities. Okay? We ran our application process for three weeks. We announced on August 1st. You had a copy of the press release, and we took applications through August 22nd. I was proud to see that we had an increase in applications. We had 17 total. Of course, that made it more challenging for the committee in paring down these projects because so many of them are very worthwhile. As I said, you will see the press release, and then you see the program information that accompanies the, anytime anyone sends in a request for the application, you will see what we send them. It's very clear about what we can and cannot fund, very clear about deadlines. And then on the third page, with the selection process, you will see what they need to submit to us. There's a summary sheet that they attach, and then they give us a project description, scope of work, timeline for execution, their budget, project target area or group, their most recent audit or financial statement, and we do accept financial statements, so some nonprofits are just not large enough or have enough financial capacity to execute an audit. And then proof of their good standing as a nonprofit corporation with the Secretary of State. So if any of those things are not present in the application, then that would make that entity ineligible for funding at the time. So on the very back of your packet, the last sheet, you'll see our recommendations for this year. And I will say that we had a challenging task of whittling down $235,677.68 in requests to the $50,000 that were allocated. And so our recommendations are as follows. CADA sent in a proposal for their community services and housing council program. They requested $50,000. We were able to fund $15,000, or proposed to fund. CARE, which is also known as the John 316 Center in Littleton, proposed for a pickleball and tennis courts and program. They requested, and they had, in their budget, pointed out a significant number of contributions to this project, which the cost is over $100,000. So they're getting lots of support from other places, and then had a particular part that the county could play. They requested $8,187, and we were able to fund $4,000. The Edward Cheek House Museum, which is the African-American Museum and Gardens right behind the Health Department, across from the historic site property, they requested $50,000 for some renovations and improvements. We were able to fund $4,000 for a specific identified set of improvements. The Fighters Foundation, that's a relatively new nonprofit. Unfortunately, due to some financial challenges, we were not able to fund that project. It just doesn't seem like they're far enough along in their process. Halifax County Arts Council, the Artist in You, they requested $4,500, and we were able to fund $3,000. Hannah's Place, this was a neat project. They've requested funds for a playground to be at the site that houses the moms and their children. They asked for $2,670.68, and of that, we were able to fund $2,500. The Hattie Congress Stadium Senior Center requested funds for Congress and Humbar Meals. They requested $12,760, and we were able to fund $4,500 for that project. Helpful Hands and Hearts, this is an organization that serves the five counties around Lake Gaston, including Halifax County. Neat project. They most often build ramps for accessibility into homes, but they also put forth a project to get a powered scooter that they could loan, they don't call them clients, they call them friends, so that they could loan to their friends for use in mobility. And that scooter would be required to be provided to a friend in Halifax County. They requested $2,000, and we were able to fund $1,500, which should cover the cost in its entirety of a scooter. Highly Favored Ministries put forth a proposal for Hollister Community Park, requesting $25,000 for a land purchase. As you know, we've talked about a park in Hollister before this board, and so we decided not to put forward funding through this program, but we would talk together and try to pull all the entities in Hollister together to see how to move forward on the park property. Okay? Historical Halifax Restoration Association put forth a project for colonial period clothing and accessories for their Bradford Denton House, where they're doing those demonstrations. And we were able to fund half of their request for $3,750. We feel like there are some other funding agencies out there, perhaps Halifax County Tourism or other grant programs to get the other portion of that. An entity called Mind Over Mood put forth a program for a girl's home for girls, requesting $25,000. We were not able to fund this project. Although they do have a nonprofit corporation through the Secretary of State, they just seem to be very new in their foundation and haven't really established a financial history for us to really consider the financial statements. Rennie Cropper Partners, as you know, they run, operate the Rennie Cropper State Trail through five counties in North Carolina. And they requested $5,000. We were able to fund $3,000, again, to be used for their two camping platforms that are located in Halifax County, one in Halifax and one in Tillingham, and also to potentially develop the trailhead, which they have proposed for River Falls Park in Wildom. Running Valley Adult Day Center put forth a proposal for an activity space for all hours participants, kind of a memory care center. It's a great project. They asked for $10,000. We were able to fund $4,500. Saving Histories put forth a proposal for an outfit for Patsy Young. That's a reenactment for the Underground Railroad. Great project. Unfortunately, the nonprofit corporation is not active at this time, so we were not able to fund that project. Sisters of Serenity, another nonprofit, put forth a mental health project. Again, seems like it's a drive-up nonprofit, but just doesn't have a lot of financial history for us to consider, so we were not able to fund that project at this time. Essence Fulton put forth a project for the Nurture Nest, which was an interesting dupe project. Again, unfortunately, that nonprofit corporation is not active at this time, so we were not able to fund that project. And then finally, our last one, the Union Mission. They're planning to renovate the room at the inn, which supplies housing for those who are homeless or in need of a temporary residence. I think that's meal residence only. So they put forth a very specific project for $5,000 for those renovations, and we were able to fund $4,250 for a grand total of $50,000. I'd be happy to take any other comments from those who served on the committee about the projects or the process, if there's anything you'd like to share.
I'll just say, as a member of the committee, great ideas that were submitted, and we had great conversation, and we looked at what, we were really, Commissioner Barrett made sure that we sort of held, our mission was to make sure that the money that we give were coming from taxpayer's money, so how can it be given back into our county as well? So we were trying to make sure our money reached as far as we could.
Right. Mr. Barrett, I've raised a great point about trying to keep those dollars turning over in Halifax County. And ideally, when you're funding renovation projects or purchasing equipment, you know, trying to purchase those items from Halifax County lenders and contractors, which was a great idea. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I have one. Mind Over Mood, group homes for girls?
Yes.
Know nothing about it, but is that active today, currently have young ladies?
They do not. I think what they're trying to do is get off the ground. So they do have an active nonprofit corporation. I don't have all this in my head, but if I'm remembering correctly, it seems like it may have been formed in December 2024, so relatively new. Like I said, definitely a project that's needed in this county, but I think we want to let them get off the ground, and then maybe we could consider them for funding in future years.
Yes. Hopefully, they're listening, and once they get off the ground, come back again.
Yeah.
Maybe discourage.
Absolutely. And we can maybe make some suggestions in the letters that we send out about, to let them know if they were funded or not.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no other questions regarding this matter, I entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 25-26 funding recommendations of the committee for the community grant programs.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Jimmy Silver, I'm sorry. And second by Commissioner Redding. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And next on our agenda, we have to consider a resolution from our Halifax County Personnel Policy. Ms. Christina Shotwell is on the agenda, but she is out today due to illness, so our County Manager, Ms. Dia Denton, will fill in for her.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Back in June, Ms. Shotwell presented a comprehensive list of revisions to our county personnel policy, and you all adopted that, and they were effective July 1st. There was one paragraph that we discovered afterward that was not deleted as we intended it to be. It was included in your executive summary, but it was not deleted out of the personnel policy itself. So this resolution that you have in front of you gives us the authority to actually delete that paragraph that has to do with exempt employees being on call for a holiday. It's on-call pay. And staff requested that that be removed. It was approved, but it was not, again, deleted in the personnel policy itself. So we just ask that you adopt this resolution this morning to amend the personnel policy to delete that paragraph.
You all have heard the request. Is there any questions? If not, I entertain a motion for this. Okay, it's been motioned by Commissioner Redding. They're second. Second by Commissioner Barrett to adopt the resolution.
Resolution.
The resolution to amend the Halifax County Personnel Policy. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll make that change.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the other items and take a break after this. So we have next on the agenda, resolution support of funding and development of the Wildom to Raleigh Passion Rail Quarter, and Halifax County economic developer, we got this topic.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have in your packages a resolution in support of funding and development of the Wildom to Raleigh Passion Rail Quarter. As a little bit of a history was attached to this particular resolution. Back in 2022, NCDOT entered into an agreement with CSX Transportation for the acquisition or reuse of several portions of the abandoned S-line, S-L-line that traverses through our state and particularly in our neck of the woods. So NCDOT started a process of identifying rail quarters that could take advantage of this newly acquired or able to be used rights of way. And so part one of the 12 quarters identified was the Wildom to Raleigh Quarter. So in 2023, DOT was awarded 3.5 million from the Federal Railroad Administration to conduct scoping, planning, and preliminary engineering for seven quarters. The Wildom to Raleigh Quarter was not one of those, just so you know. But that work is underway, and it's hoped that there will be additional funding that will come from the federal government to support the same process for the remaining five quarters. And President Trump and his administration and past administration has been a strong supporter of rail development. So we'll keep our fingers crossed for that. To that end, we need to keep this quarter in the minds of our state officials and state legislative leaders. The project is on the stip, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program. It continues to be on the stip. It's only for planning purposes, but we need to keep it as, you know, in the forefront because it's a very strong economic driver for us and something that can benefit our residents tremendously from a health, economic development, and an educational perspective. So you have a resolution, and I ask for your consideration of adoption of this resolution so we can submit it to the powers that be and keep our portion of this quarter in the hearts and minds of these important individuals.
Do you have questions?
I will add that at the Halifax County Intergovernmental Association meeting, it was brought up at that meeting, and other county, excuse me, other towns and municipalities have adopted similar resolutions, so we're packaging those and we'll send those along with this one.
Ms. Snyder, is there anything else that you can do as a board to help push this further or keep it in the conversations?
I think when the states submit its funding requests to the federal government, we need to be behind that and, you know, help them to be able to get our positions and our needs and the funds of those organizations that are funding the future development of this quarter, because, you know, that's really, it's all about the money. That's what it's all about. So we definitely need to trust that. And we have in the past written letters, you know, to the Secretary of Transportation and others to support applications for funding, but I guess there are a lot of other places looking for funding as well, so whatever we need to do, we need to do.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Make a motion and go ahead and submit this resolution.
Okay. A motion has been made to adopt the resolution expressing Halifax County continued support for the funding and development of the Wildom to Raleigh Passion Rail Quarter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You all came to take care of business this morning, so we're moving right along, but at this point, we'll take a 10-minute break.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes.
So I can't see that.
For returning, we're back in session. So our next item on the agenda is approval of board appointments. In your agenda, you do, we do have Halifax Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for approval, but we want to hold off on that. I think there's some more questions to be answered before we consider that. So we will table that to our next month's meeting. That's okay. And so that leads us to the Scotland Neck Planning Board. Just give me a moment to get there. So they've received a nomination to waive the term limit and reappoint Linda Clark to the Scotland Neck Planning Board. Can I have a motion for, that approve?
So moved.
Okay. Motion is second. All those in favor, that would be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And I do believe that's the last, that's it?
Yep.
For the board of pools. So at this time, we'll turn it over to Ms. Kathy Scott, Economic Development Report.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
I put something on my calendar, just a minute, you guys. Okay, economic indicators, our unemployment rate is 5.7 as of July. That's a little less than what was a year ago, July, but up over the last 14 years or two weeks, which was not the last. Non-employment, unemployment was 10,000, 39,000, here is 1,088, a year ago. Million unemployment, which is 5.3 million, very much along with a year ago. And retail sales are 6 million, that's 62 million, last year. There was 1,025 jobs advertised as available in August. And those jobs openings are in primarily the manufacturing, childcare, and retail services sector. So definitely jobs available for our team. We've been doing a little bit of research, and if you know, we received funding through the labor trade to help us. So the finishing of our R and D and some of the things that are about to be interesting for us to include in our R and D, with some of the dynamics of our workforce and workforce services, to kind of set the tone for the labor trade. And so looking at daycare as an important part of our workforce success, and there are a total of 38 licensed daycare facilities in Halifax County. And there's 2,070 slots in those daycare facilities, which means, you know, to be different times of day, different shift, that kind of thing. You can see that from a graphics, the green is the largest area of availability, the percentage of people lives, and where the industry is in that vicinity. But in field, Halifax County also has, gives the service available everywhere in the county head of daycare services available, coming early. There's more to come on this topic, because it's a very important part of our workforce development, and supporting the opportunity to be there. I hope you all get the newsletter that we submit on every other month basis. We've had some new businesses opening, plant fitness, we have a new auto service facility, and there's a new cafe coming up, that's really revolutionary. A very large turnout for the, I mean, opening for the very build in Sweets. They officially opened the gas on August 25th, as a $20 million dollar investment, 20,000 full-time jobs. Really glad to see that project moving forward. And there's a long-term restaurant, spending construction money, and a property based at that facility. I participated in the Cindy's Music Theater, the energy sector, which started the building facility, and the office that we got finished away, and our state legislature, Black Theater, so there's well-intended group, very well-intended event, and group, very energetic group. This is the, the head of that organization, Paul Lee, and we worked together many years, so on the reach, I'll read out about the basics. Most recently, Smucker, restaurant, which all knows from the largest industries in Sweets, then Wyatt, who's a mill manager, retired in harvest after 46 years, and falls apart, his industry, really happy to see him down, but he has a very capable and visible framework that's going to send a lot of people home. Charles Mavro, maybe, founder of Halifax County, most recently recognized by County Point Workforce Development Board, Governor's Service. Chairman, Brian Wyatt, is going to be the chair of consortia coming up for this this week, so really good to have that connection. I'm really proud that the Air Hall's Consistorate project is, is moving toward funding. I've been talking to others for over a year, and the Southeast Department Authority is going to approve a grant of 2,500, this is recommended to governmental approval. And C G O T, there's major commitment of 270,000, and then we have an application to E D A that's in the funding queue now. So hopefully next month, I'll be able to get all the pieces together for that project. And then another project, we've talked about, please, you guys, 301 and Joshua's side, we are applying for, the total grant, the total grant project is $300,000. We're going to be applying, we are applying for $2,300,000 for access road construction and electrical improvements to start that side. And this is through the monthly select site grant program. We received funding last year for some of the final diligence items for this property, and now this is for actual construction. And we got a commitment from C G O T of Mac for that, $650,000 for that access road. But that, what's really important about this is there's some people who've been working with that long term, they're going to have access to a pay for it if this is funding. So keep your fingers crossed, I'll have a really good deal, and we will know this week if the board actually decides to make recommendations for funding. And so we have two other major construction projects that we can ramp up. No, I'm sorry, that's in the, right outside of here. And that's a C G O T class, and your board extension, and the inbuilt exit 104, so the connection and that. So the same funding agencies are able to run those, but they won't do it in the same year, so you have to program funding to enable the project to start. It's really hard to do these projects. August was a very robust month for client inquiries. We had several visits offered, and then one with a couple of our visiting industry that were looking to have a expansion project. Lots of meetings and activities coming up in September, and just looking forward, hopefully you all received your invitations to the Halifax Horizons annual meeting coming up. Please come, show your support for that organization, that helps us so much with our development and that. As I would have for any questions, I'll be back in a minute.
I was going to ask, wait, what were you saying about the 154? You're doing such an elegant presentation, I didn't want to stop you. On the 154 exit, the...
What are we doing?
Yeah, you said something about the funding on that.
So Halifax Horizons paid for a preliminary engineering study for that infrastructure development about a year and a half, two years ago. And so we were actually working with the Metta's Civil Project to look at a way to merge the two projects together, but I think the feasibility of that became very soon, from what I understand. So we're, we're going to pursue it as a standalone project. I agree that it is one of, you know, having funding with that interchange is a really big opportunity for infield in that area. And so we'll definitely focus on trying to get some funding to support that project. It's a $6 million project, a high price tag, you get that done, but it's not impossible. So start building and running all that. I hope that answered your question.
Keep giving more detail about exactly the $6 million. Where, where you think you want to get the funds from?
There's several funds that support projects in rural areas, like the Golden Lake, there's utility account that don't require jobs investment to fund a project. There's E D A, same, for the same organizations that we're applying for the road treatments for air malls. And just other federal and state programs that we can target for that project. Some require jobs, some don't. And, and there is an existing company at that interchange that can't be served, they can't grow because they don't have sewer. So that's a positive part of the project, with that, as a, as a means to get additional funding for that.
So, so if you get, if you got the sewer project completed, could that be a, I guess a, an area where we could develop?
Absolutely.
Like, you don't talk, can I actually develop and put the infrastructure there and we can actually develop?
Water's already there.
Okay.
And so adding sewer, it definitely would be. And, and in my opinion, where we need to look at growth is towards these interchanges.
Okay.
And the closer we can go south, the better. And when we update our comprehensive development plan, that's one of the things that will hopefully be discussed and weight given to the importance of the development of those exits. Yes, absolutely.
Just, that's another question. What, let's say that you're not able, let's say you get 4 million, okay? And we're $2 million short. What would you, what would be your next step?
Well, you can look at loan.
Okay.
And, and look at the rates, you know, that you would charge for the sewer for the people along the route, that kind of nature pay. That's probably going to be a part of the overall strategy anyway, so it might be some.
Okay.
But, you know, the goal is to give us much more entertainment, or just a small portion of it, to make the project work.
You got an idea of what timeframe you're looking at?
Hopefully in the next couple of years.
All right. Reason I'm asking, because I was at a meeting last week, and everybody kept talking about jobs, 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 and I went through every exit that we have. And I said, 173, 171, I said, but after that, we can't bring anything. And they didn't understand the fact. I said, we don't have the infrastructure to bring anything to these exits, you know? And that's why I'm glad that you brought it up, because that was going to be a question I was going to ask.
And you know, this has been on our list for a year.
Right, okay.
And so you, we're in an interesting funding cycle now, because you hear of some programs that are going away. And then some that we're very used to, like E D A, there's scrutiny, every project is funded, so you don't, it's, it's not that it's on the merits, it's just scrutiny. And so you got to, you know, just keep working past those challenges and try and get it funded.
Okay.
And anyway, but thank you for your interest.
Thank you, all right, thank you.
That shows me that you have, that's a priority for you to ask.
That's right, that's all right.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
If you want me to do my job, there will be more from your priorities on it.
Isn't, wouldn't a natural gas be a, being having natural gas be a benefit as well out there?
Well, and you know, there's natural gas in the, that holds along 301, so definitely the natural gas route can be...
It's already there. It's, it's already out there, I got gas.
Yeah, if it's something major, funds extension to that interchange would be definitely possible.
Good deal.
Thanks, y'all, for the great question.
I have, I have a question, Ms. Kathy. I'm sorry. Regarding the study done on the daycares and...
The labor study?
Labor study. So we do, we need more, I'm guessing that's what the recommendation was, correct?
It's for us to understand what we have.
What we have, okay.
What I also look at, and, and it's part of a better picture, is how many schools, how many new children need daycare services? How many children are there in Halifax County under five years of age that would need daycare? So, based on the last census, it's 2060. And so you've got that many slots, you've got that many kids, overall, but, you know, it's a dynamic of where they live, too. And also the work, you know, timelines, when childcare is available to parents. And if you're working second shift at research, then you may not have a daycare close by. So just finding it out, that's what it is.
Okay.
It's not just basic numbers, it's looking and finding out what you got. And our labor study needs to look at that, as, you know, how is daycare and childcare availability impacting our labor workers, based on where people work? Thank you, y'all.
Thank you. So now we'll turn to our county manager.
Thank you, good morning again to all of you. I have two items on your agenda for your consideration today. The first one is regarding your public comment policy. Your current policy, and this is also dictated by state law, you're required to have at least one public comment period per month, and your policy states that you'll have that at your first meeting of each month, which is, which makes sense, because sometimes you don't have a second meeting, depending on what month it is. With your upcoming off-site meeting taking place in Tillery on September 15th, we've had some very brief discussions about adding a public comment period, but I wanted to get your thoughts and possibly your approval to add a public comment item for not only this off-site meeting, but for all of your off-site meetings. And if that's something that you're interested in, will amend your policy to reflect that decision? So that was it for that, unless you have questions.
And just to clarify, it will follow our same public hearing policy?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you for bringing that out. I would recommend you follow the exact same procedures that you have in place now, where you sign up and you have three minutes, that could go to five, at the discretion of the chair, if you would like. So we recommend all of the other will stay in place.
We can definitely sign up between 5:00 and 5:30.
Yeah, and, and I think we could probably allow a little bit of flexibility for that, just so, because it's off-site and, you know, it's...
It's coming from work.
Right, and it's, it's a different area, so I think we can certainly allow some flexibility for that, at the chair's discretion, to sign up to speak, yeah. And we had a, a good meeting with Ms. Doris, and I think we have a good setup that'll work for this meeting for y'all.
Is it a possibility to look at, right now, having sign up to speak for a public comment online or something? Because sometimes people have a difficult time getting there early, like even here. I know sometimes people want to come, but then they don't want to sit and wait 30 minutes. But I know some places they're allowing, you'd have been, like some school boards and different places, even some counties are doing, we can sign up for public comment online, that they...
Let me research that a little bit and see kind of what would be a good option that we could put out there, and what our capabilities are. But let me come up with something, and we'll get it back to y'all.
Because I've done public comment before, selected a couple times. I had to come, and I had to, I drove to Mark Rafferty's to get breakfast, and that didn't make sense relative, you know, you had to spend that kind of time if you come from the other side of the county.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
Also going to determine what type of internet and...
Right, I mean, I'm almost thinking you could even call. I think it may be prudent to offer that option to call and ask. So if we could research that, we'll get something for your consideration.
Okay, but if you waited for a motion to...
I'll, I'll let you know, the Royal Rapids City Council has a scheduled public comment, so I don't know how they do it. They have scheduled, ain't no scheduling, yeah, how they schedule it.
I've seen that on their agenda, I'll see if they have a policy, and see what their policy says.
So do we need a motion on this, or just a general consent, or...
I would like a motion if, if you'd like to add a public comment to your off-site meetings, if that's the...
Okay, I'll make a motion that they add a public comment section, will sign up at all off-site meetings in the future.
All right, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Reddy. All those in favor, that would be known by the word aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. And just as an aside, I did confirm Hollister Elementary for your second meeting in January, so we're already on their calendar, so we'll be working with them about their audio visual and all the, the logistics of that. So you can plan for that, and once we get your 2026 calendar, meeting calendar ready, we'll have that on there for your second meeting in January at Hollister Elementary. All right, my second item, let me switch gears, is, and Glenn can help me with this one if he wants to, but back at your August 4th meeting, you approved a 60-day moratorium on development approvals for mining operations in the county. In order to meet that deadline before the moratorium expires, we would like for you all to agree to set a special meeting for Monday, September 29th, to consider some new standards. That will give the planning board time to meet also in September, on their regular day, which is September 17th, that's a Wednesday. And then that would come before you all on Monday, September 29th. Staff does not have a preference on the time of day, that's totally up to y'all. Chairman Bryant says he's also flexible on the time, so whatever works best in your schedules. Glenn, did you have anything to add to that?
What else say about that? One, one purpose of that meeting would be to conduct your legislative hearing on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance with respect to mining activity. And given that it's, you know, a legislative hearing, it probably would be better, I think, if the public can come to an evening meeting, you might get better turnout than if you have a 9:30 meeting. So I would, I would suggest that maybe an evening meeting makes sense, because it's for that particular purpose. And then the other action that would be on the agenda would be some kind of action following that legislative hearing. But since you want the public input and want to encourage that, probably makes sense to have it as an evening meeting.
Right.
Turner Brothers, interested concern I had, so saying that with 5:30 or 6:00 possibly? What time, most of you guys get here, fill out working people?
We're going to be here anyway, so...
We're not going anywhere.
We're not waiting anywhere.
I'm trying to get into this.
You know, I would have to take 5:30 as minimum, and it's always a little better, you can give it, I mean, how, we never have any 6:00. I don't want to break the public off with this.
It's 5:30.
Okay. So, we have a motion needed.
Do you need a motion to set us, I would prefer a motion to set a special meeting for a legislative hearing at 5:30 on Monday, September 29th.
Yeah, can I be a little, but let me pick a, a motion to schedule a special meeting for both a legislative hearing on amendments to the zoning ordinance and for possible action on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. We'll have that motion in a second.
Can you hear this suggestion for the motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Silver, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reddy. All those in favor, that would be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We'll get that advertised, and we'll be ready for that meeting as well. And that is all for my report momentarily, unless there are questions for me.
Are there any other questions for our county manager? If not, we'll turn it over to attorney.
Thank you. Good morning, board. Couple things, one, action items reviewed, and then the other just from information, all concerning the same thing, and that is our, our recent discussions with the town of Weldon about a regional water treatment facility. At your seats, you'll see a copy of a memorandum of understanding, which was approved by the board back in June, and this is an executed copy, just wanted you to have that, because the next item in that stack of, set of papers is a proposed first amendment to that M O U. And let me explain why we're suggesting this, and the town of Weldon has also, is either has or is going to entertain this amendment. In our, basically weekly meetings, we've been having about site search for the water treatment facility. It's, and then discussing with engineers, we're clearly going to have other expenses other than just cooperating and trying to select a site, and the things that are particularly associated with site selection and site assessment, things such as if we get to a property that we want to put an option on, an option priced and/or escrow deposit at some point, but also, you know, we're going to have to have appraisals done, environmental studies, that sort of thing. We've already approved and set aside money into Chris's budget for these kinds of expenses, but we, Sharon Lynn and I, Sharon is the town's attorney, realized that we probably wanted to be specific about the kinds of things that we were going to cooperate on and sharing cost on. So this amendment just adds that additional language about those costs, how they'll be divided evenly, and if one of the parties puts up the cost upfront, the other will be reimbursed, will reimburse that party within a 30-day period. We just want to be a little more specific about that. So what I'll ask you to do is to consider, if you have questions, let me know, but if you'll consider adoption of this first amendment to the M O U between the town of Weldon and I think you have to ask them to make the motion.
Is there a motion? I was just looking for it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's more additional calls, right?
Yes.
There's, there's more additional calls to this, just...
No, no, we're not adding any money to the, to the money that's going to appropriate, we just know that these specific things are going to come up, and we just thought it'd be best to clarify the kinds of things that we would have to primarily, you know, cooperate on as far as getting them paid for.
Sounds good, you don't cost me no money.
But that may come out, costs shared equally.
At this point, be shared equally, yes. The idea is that as things move along, if this project moves along, I do not want to get way ahead of myself on this, but, but at some point, as this project develops, these costs become part of the costs that get reimbursed from the grants and loans that are in place for the project. I don't, maybe, I probably shouldn't even have gone there, but at least primarily, we need to get this kind of stuff done, and we wanted to share those costs equally at this point.
So we need a motion for approval?
Just a motion to approve our execution of the first amendment.
Execution of the first amendment.
So moved, you said it so loudly. So moved, you said it's a way of doing it.
That's been moved by Commissioner Silver for approval of the first amendment, third second.
Second.
Okay. And second by Commissioner Barrett. All those in favor, let me know whether aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The motion passed.
Thank you. And the other matter concerning the same project is, is just to bring to your attention that, that our outside counsel, Ms. Catherine Klaufelder with Parker Poe, has developed a draft interlocal agreement. And we have provided that to the town of Relden. And in the meantime, North Hampton County is also interested in being, considering being a part of this project. And so we have met, Relden, folks from Relden and Halifax County have met with representatives from North Hampton County in a preliminary discussion of having North Hampton join as part of this regional project. So what Catherine has done is developed a three-party agreement at this point, for everyone's consideration. We are going to be meeting, staff from each of those entities are going to be meeting remotely on Thurs, Thursday this week, to discuss the initial draft. And mind you, I don't want to give one's hopes up, I'm very hopeful this works, but North Hampton is interested, and they are early into this, and they are interested in, in discussing an interlocal agreement with the other two parties involved. I just wanted you to have a copy of this. I won't go into it in detail, because it could change as we have discussions, but I just wanted you to have this now, so it's just after seats for you to, to have. I do have in closed session, I would like to discuss with you some particulars with respect to site selection and so forth. So I'm going to resolve that for closed session, if you don't mind. That's all I have.
But you have a question for Attorney? Does that a question? None?
Don't even let them know.
Okay. So at this time, we are moving into other business.
I'd just like to take the time to thank the, the county staff for helping arrange our participation in our county commissioner associations conference this year. I think it was greatly attended, and by, I think the location also allowed it ease for us to, ease us to participate in, in that, so learned a lot. And I was able to sit in on a session about first responding, how to respond to disaster plans, because that was very talked about there, like especially hurricane relief efforts in, for Hurricane Helena. And it just got me to thinking, and I would like, at some point in the, in the future, not now, because I know we have a lot on our plate, but maybe we could look at just sharing up our emergency response plans to disasters, and maybe seeing how we can connect with our local communities and municipalities. Because when I think about the outage in infield, you know, that was going on, and I think sometimes the county gets a bad rap, like what is the county doing? If maybe we can have a advisory council that composed of our responders, county officials and agencies, and community members, that maybe that streamline of communications in those incidents can be better served in making sure that everybody's aware what's going on and how to help. One of the things that I learned about Hurricane Helena was having, ports of having volunteer management and donation management, and having a distribution policy in place. So just some things that I learned, it really just stuck out to me, and I was like, maybe we need to do this. And I'm sure we've done this so far, but also they stress and force a review on it, because no matter how well prepared you are, you're never prepared for something like that.
And along that same lines, it's very timely, our emergency management coordinator will actually be speaking to your next H C I A meeting for the municipalities as well as the county. And there's been, so a lot of, a lot of different mayors coming and going, and it'll be a good time to communicate what the steps should be if you encounter some kind of emergency, whether it be a power outage or hurricane, and what, what the county's role is, what their role is, and how we can all work together and manage those things. So you'll be hearing more about that actually later this month.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barrett, Chair. I agree, and I would like to, county manager, let y'all think about that, because out of my time at special operations for nearly eight years, we never did an exercise in Halifax County, we did in North Hampton, excuse me, not North Hampton, Edgecombe County, Nash, and she remember when the hurricane came, it washed out three oh one, and it made it so much smoother by us having those training exercises and playing and learning how to play like we know Squirt for Water now. Nash County has their Squirt for Water rescue team. Who to call resources, because when an incident happened, thirty minutes, hour may not seem like a big deal, but if you got a family flooded out there like on ninety-five, that fifteen minutes meant that couple died. If they had have been practicing, that person seemed, the people would have probably lived. So it's so important that we do this, because other counties are doing it, and they're working us doing it, and I'm sure Edgecombe County, and they're pretty good at it.
All right. Any other?
I have one thing, I just want to put it out there. After last week's rash of violent crimes here in Halifax County, Riddleton, Atlantic Rapids, I reached out to the county sheriff, had a discussion with him. And in our discussions, I kind of said I would love to hear from him on what his plans are, what he's doing, what his needs may be, what we can help him with. And I believe, I don't know if he has yet or not, he's going to reach out to the county manager and come before this board at some point in time. So I kind of, I kind of got the ball wrong on that, so I just want to put that out there. If, if you guys were against anything, my dad, you need to let the county manager know, because I kind of, I feel like we need, we need, we need to know what's going on, and if there's something we can help the law enforcement in this county with right now, we need to try to figure it out, because we got, we got to solve this problem.
We had a couple different discussions between the sheriff and I last week and early this week. He'll be at your first meeting in October. And he'll be addressing the board in October.
And I think Commissioner Barrett's getting the same thing I've got. I got calls about people who look in areas like drive-by shootings, and something's got to be done by someone, we need some coordination or something, because my phone, I know he's had the same thing, it's happened real frequently, it never seemed like.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. All right. At this time, we're moving on to the closed session of our agenda, and we need to, we need to go into closed session for.
I'm going to ask that you go into closed session to discuss acquisition of real estate and to give instruction to staff concerning possible acquisition of real estate.
Okay.
Kathy, do you have anything?
I just gave a quick update from last week.
And just a brief economic development update on a project.
Okay. You've heard our points for our closed session. Can I get a motion to go in closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
Second? Okay, motion by Commissioner Webb and second by Commissioner Silver to enter into closed session.